Somewhat odd time of day on Wednesday at two. We've been making adjustments due to Christmas scheduling, but if y'all would, we're going to have Reverend Forbes sermon, lead us with a prayer and follow that with a pledge.
Would you please bow your heads?
Yes.
And let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the abundance of your gifts that you have bestowed upon the people of this community, for the bounty of this city and the beautiful land in which it resides. We pray this day for your wisdom and strength upon our mayor and our council members to make fair, meaningful, and timely decisions for our city of Fairhope. Be with them collectively, giving them a spirit of wisdom to govern amidst any conflicting interests and issues of our time. Give them compassion to understand the needs of the people who live here and of one another. Give them a sense of your justice so that they may do what is good and right in your eyes. And may a sense of peace and trust rest upon this place and this group of officials. Protect those who travel during this time of celebration, peace, and joy. And may your love and blessings rest upon us all so that we may continue to become the people you call us to be. All this we pray in the name of Christ, whose incarnation we celebrate this week. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Forbes. Y'all say a prayer for Forbes. He's got two little girls and he doesn't wrap up Christmas Eve service till about 11:30, so he'll be busy. All right. Merry Christmas. All right, Councilman. The first item of business is to approve the minutes of the December 13th regular city council meeting and the minutes of the December 13th work session.
I think I should do a prayer.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion, anything seem missing? All right. Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. None, motion carries. Mayor, your report.
Thank you. I'm going to be really short today. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and looking forward to the New Year's celebration, of course, on New Year's Eve in downtown. I think it's really great to have that back this year and be able to celebrate with everybody and ring in 2022, and just looking forward to what the New Year will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is public participation. This is for agenda items only, so if you've got comments, would like to address the council on Agenda Items five through 16, please come forward and address the council. If you have anything outside of that, we will save that till the very end of the council meeting. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Longfield. I live at 206 North Summit Street. I'm here to speak in support of the bank stabilization project, which is item number 15 on today's agenda. The erosion on the western side of the gully between church and Summit Streets, which is north of Summit, I'm sorry, north of Oak, has been getting gradually worse for several years. The residents whose colony property and homes are put at risk by this erosion have raised this as an issue with both the City of Fairhope and Fairhope Single Tax Corporation multiple times in the last seven years. There have been several large cave-ins of earth and trees into the gully, usually tied to a major rainstorm. The edge of one cave-in is now within a few feet of one of the properties, and the lots affected are likely to face severe erosion if it's not corrected by this project. Richard Johnson's done an excellent job of explaining the project to all of the affected residents, and I can assure you that we are all fully supportive of this bank stabilization project, and I respectfully ask the council to approve it today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you addressing the council. Anyone else like to speak on Agenda Items five through 16? All right. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the floor and move on to council comments. Councilman Burrell.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Keep it short and sweet myself. Thanks for all you've done this year for everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Martin.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Yes, Merry Christmas, same as last year. Prayers to all your families, loved ones. If you're traveling, be safe on the road, and we love you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Robinson.
Merry Christmas.
All right. Councilman Bean.
Again, Merry Christmas and make sure everybody knows not to go out and make some foolish decisions over the holidays. Be careful and be safe.
All right. Well, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I don't have anything else to add, so. First item up is a final adoption of an ordinance. This is to amend zoning ordinance 1253, request to zone the property of Hilltop Fairhope LLC to plan the unit development concurrent with annexation. The property is generally located on the west side of Section Street on PDL Drive and North PDL Drive of Fairhope, Alabama, and PIN is 40591, all parcels included in the slide. Hunter.
Thank you, Council. So I'm going to be, I'm going to follow the lead and try to be quick. We did discuss this and had questions last meeting during the public hearing. I'm going to move through quick, but if there's any questions, be happy to back up and address those. This was a two-phase project that was approved as preliminary plat within the planning jurisdiction and is now seeking annexation to into the City of Fairhope. The every lot 27 through, 1 through 27 are, I'm sorry, 1 through 29 are residential, one commercial lot. This is a PUD. The language and the use of that lot is expressed within the master development plan included within the PUD. I know we talked about that, and it's kind of market, you know, there's limitations of what it can be is a little residential, market, coffee shops, things along that nature. That abuts Section Street. Everything else is residential. This is one of those, we typically don't see a PUD like this where it's already built, but if you haven't had a chance, I recommend drive-through. They've done a great job kind of preserving a lot of the trees in the area, the wetlands, the connectivity and walking trails. A lot of those were done with good sensitivity, and we already have some houses built in the area. It is a PUD because it doesn't exactly match R1 zoning. It's the same, similar sized lots, but just the setbacks in the way they were formed. And then we also have that commercial lot, which is shown on the screen. We just kind of discussed what that use was, which is here if we need to refer back. Green State Place Plan was approved during the preliminary plats of Phase One and Two and just shown here in its entirety for clarity's sake. This did go through the Planning Commission and unanimously recommended to approve. CZ 21.44. The applicant is here, Jason Tickle, behind me, if you have any questions as well.
All right, council members, do y'all have any questions for Hunter or for the?
Yeah, Hunter, could you briefly review those allowable uses for the lot 29? Yeah, that?
Sure. So the community house was the description. So within the PUD, they've, in the narrative provided, they've described what may be used. Some of those could be a cafe, potentially coffee, bakery, beer and wine, limited food items, bed and breakfast units, fitness, yoga, arts crafts, small gallery, or professional office space. The size of the lot obviously is going to limit the density and the volume, but allowing that flexibility is kind of instrumental in part of our conversations in bringing it all in versus residential and piecemealing. So, you know, it's kind of slopes there, so some might be split level where the commercials above the residential, some may be residential above commercial. So that flexibility to design something and find the right project for that. If not, that reverts to R1. That may be within this PUD. If they can't find the right partner in that, this can be revert to R1 and be one single family lot.
Is there a sunset clause on that as to when that would expire? And then are there any specific exclusions for that lot 29, such as anything with a drive-through?
There are not expressed in the language. I think that could be a condition, and I don't think that would be a problem.
Would it be too much to add that tonight?
No. I think that's feasible. I think that's very feasible.
Council, would you have a problem if I just, if I made a motion to?
I think I would.
To approve the zoning to a PUD with the, with the staff recommend or the Planning Commission's conditions, and then also the condition that lot 29 not have any drive-throughs?
And actually Planning Commission nor staff had any other recommendation. You know, we discuss those things and knowing what we know about it, we would tell somebody that came in with a drive-through idea, our gas station, no, that's not going to work.
And Mr. Tickle, I don't think you have any, but sometimes you don't leave things to chance. Rather not leave that to chance.
And it would be good to memorialize that in a condition. I think that's fair.
I think people would maybe appreciate that, too. Okay.
Good suggestion, Councilman.
I second the motion.
Well, I don't know if he's made a motion.
I didn't know people were through. No, I don't know if the discussion was.
I was going to, yeah, I was going to ask, does anybody else have any further questions for Hunter or for Mr. Tickle?
Okay. Well, then I move to rezone the property to a PUD with the Planning Commission's recommend conditions and also with the condition that lot 29 not have any drive-throughs of any type.
Okay. So we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Does anybody have any further questions, comments, discussion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor with the recommendation from Councilman Burrell?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Bean. Keep me, keep me straight.
I appreciate that. Smooth with that one.
Ordinance passes. Thank you, sir. Next item up is an ordinance, final adoption to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, and this is a request to zone property of Dell Cordy to B2. That's General Business District concurrent with annexation, and this property is located at the northeast corner of State Highway 181 and State Highway 104. Did we say, is that the northwest corner?
North east.
I know, but is it, is it the northeast or is it?
Northwest.
Northwest. Northwest. Yes, we did say.
It's the northwest corner.
It keeps saying northeast, doesn't it?
Right.
Yes, the northwest corner.
It should be northwest corner. Okay. So the northwest corner of State Highway 181 and State Highway 104. Hunter.
Thank you. Similar project. This was approved, had preliminary plats and MOP approval through the Planning Commission. As you know, this is the public site under construction right now and is coming in with conditional annexation to B2. This is a total of 21.24 acres. The majority of that is the Publix store itself and connected potential shops. The units, total units in there approved were 13 within that building, but can be limited, you know, they don't have to use all of those. So typical, similar to what we see on, on Grino in the Publix there. There, the property is shown on the, the right is the pre-existing conditions, and the zoning is unzoned Baldwin County at the moment. The site plan for the public site is on the screen now, and there will be out parcels. So as carved out, there are out parcels along the highways, and those are yet to be developed. Those will be developed in the future, but we'll inherit this B2 zoning this way. So all property there, this is one of the biggest, the largest commercial nodes that we have in our comp plan, so the intensity of this development, and if we're going to have drive-throughs and things like that, where Section Street is, might not be appropriate, these are, so we felt it was appropriate to recommend approval of B2. The, I think I covered all of these notes here. There is a section of right-of-way that has been requested for the city taking over. Some of the following, the next projects coming in will connect to this, so it makes sense to have this connection as a public road. But, you know, we didn't want to get into where the, the real meat of the parking lot is and be maintaining a portion of a parking lot. So we felt this was a good cutoff for that location. There is a note on here, you can't see, with the, the grass islands within that median, it will be the tenant's responsibility to maintain, so the flowers, all of those things. You know, that's a pretty large flowerbed, and I think our Public Works guys are, have their hands full, so. B2 is, the use table is here. If we have any questions about what is allowed in B2 by right or by approval or special conditions. And the Planning Commission also recommended approval without conditions for, to approve B, this conditional annexation to B2. It was unanimous, seven to zero.
And Hunter, lots two through nine, would they come back for site plan approval at the time of something being submitted?
They will fall under whatever regulations we have in place, so it's in theory, you could have three units there or more. They would fall under our MOP. If they build, you know, any of the triggers for site plan review, they would do that. But there is the potential, somebody could come in and build something small enough that doesn't trigger any more site plan or multiplicity project and just goes to a building permit, and we kind of review that administratively.
Got it.
Still have to meet the, all the zoning code of, and requirements of B2.
Okay. Just wanted to put that out there in case the council has any, any questions about that. They can consider that at this, at this time. But do y'all have any questions for Hunter right now?
One quick question. I believe we covered it in the last meeting, was that this site is served by Fairhope Water, Sewer, and Gas?
Yes.
Other council members? Any questions? No? All right. Hearing no other questions, I would entertain a, a motion if anyone would like to move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this?
Just clarification, is that what the conditions you said? I think you said there were no conditions, but the recommendation it says rezoning to B2 with conditional annexation. Oh, conditional with concurrent. That's the condition, it's concurrent with annexation.
Yes. And that's more for the applicant.
Should the motion state that? Kevin? Should you state the grant request, rezone with the condition?
Yeah, I don't think you have to state that separate.
So moved, I think, sometimes. Once again.
All right. So no additional questions or conversation? All right. City Clerk, if you'll call the question?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance passes. Thank you. Next item up is an ordinance for amending ordinance 1510 and ordinance 1635, known as Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Ordinance by amending Section 4 of the Wage and Salary Administration. This is pertaining to certifications and trainings. Travis, would that be Travis or Mayor? All right, Mayor?
Again, this is relating to certifications for employees who might go obtain certification necessary for their job. In the handbook currently, there was nothing in there for anybody who went for certifications outside of a CVL, our building officials. So we just expanded that. We did put a cap on how many you can have per year or per career.
What were, what were those caps?
It was two per year and 10 cap. And they do have to be approved by the supervisor and myself, and there's either a 50, I think it's 50 cent or a dollar increase based on the, on the certification.
Does that need to say per hour on there? The language. The certification says any employee will receive a pay increase of 50 cents or $1, to $1 per certificate.
We can, we can add per hour.
I'd hate for the mayor to get mad at somebody and give them that 50 cent raise after they got all those certificates.
I should say per hour.
I, this, it's just a omission, I think I put per hour in that.
All right. Council, any questions, any further questions for either Travis or the mayor on this item? Any discussion amongst each other? None?
I move we amend the ordinance. As presented.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All right. City Clerk, if you wouldn't mind calling the question?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance passes. And we've got another final adoption of an ordinance. This is also amending ordinance number 1510, known as Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Ordinance by amending Section 4. This is Wage and Salary Administration relative to the travel policy, and this was introduced at the last council meeting. Again, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind giving a review?
Again, this is just kind of updating our travel policy. We did not really have some of the things in the, in the, did we have a form? We did have a small policy in the handbook, but it's a couple paragraphs, not near as extensive as this, and the city clerk, HR, and the treasurer worked on this policy. I think it's a good one. I think the only conversation we've had is about the allotment for meals per day, whether you're out of state or in state, and we did look at that and also looked at the out-of-state federal per diem. So if it's higher than the, the amount stated in the ordinance, then we would look at that per diem for reimbursement.
All right. Council members, do y'all have any questions for the mayor? Matter for Travis, any comments? All right, none? All right. Would entertain a motion if y'all don't have any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. City Clerk, if you'll call the question?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance passes. Thank you, Councilman. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes and supports the submission of a fiscal year 22 RAA grant, annual grant application to ALDOT requesting $249,994 to resurface two miles of County Road 13 from Morphe to the southern, southern city limits within the City of Fairhope. And Richard?
I'll just try to keep it quick. As you know, when we got the gas tax increase, three things came out of it that directly affect the city. One, we got a direct allocation of that gas tax to go toward roads within the city. Two, they introduced what they called the ATRIP 2 program, which we've already benefited from, which was the turn lanes at Twin Beach and US 98, and you've approved a second submission for this next round as well. The third thing is the Rebuild Alabama Act, which gives up to grants of $250,000 to municipalities and county governments to do any road improvement project as long as in a qualified road. And when they say qualified, that is a functionally classified roadway. That means it's an important road, one that carries a lot of traffic. And looking at this, the last time we tried it, we, we were trying to get some sidewalk money and, and we didn't get funded. When we went and looked back at the list of all the funded projects, like 90% of them are all resurfacing projects. So we kind of, Mayor and I talked and said, we probably don't need to go against the grain trying to do that. So we're looking at the, the one road that would meet the qualification that is in the worst condition, and that is County Road 13 from Morphe South. As you'll recall, back in the 2018 paving plan, we, we did base repairs and resurfaced 13 between Morphe and Fairhope, and the county took care of the resurfacing from Fairhope all the way up to Mosley before they turned it over to us for maintenance. So that, especially the section down at Twin Beach is in really poor shape, and the section south of Twin Beach to the south end of the soccer complex is original asphalt from when that road was built. Help me remember when that was. Was that about 2002, '03? So it's got 17 years on it, and it, it's due for resurfacing as well. So we think it's a good project. Just so you understand, this money only covers construction, i.e. the paving, but we can produce all the contract documents, design documents, plans, do the letting in-house, and we can conduct our own CE&amp;I. So if we get this grant, there's no hard costs, there's no match associated. We'll do it with, with in-house personnel to manage the project.
Okay. And was there, what was, did you say there was a cap on what we could?
$250,000.
Getting pretty close.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, after looking at what thermoplast striping costs, we may end up with paint striping on this project, but we'll, you know, we will, we will, if we get it, we'll design the project to the $249,994, so.
All right. So council members, we're requesting a grant. There's no match, and we're within $6 of the cap on that request. So this is paving County Road 13 from Morphe South. Any questions for Richard?
Richard, I definitely think that we need to apply for this grant. I like this. But when we, when we get the money, if we expanded the project to extend it to Highway 34, County Road 34, it just seems more natural. That's probably about another eighth of a mile, maybe, or something like that, isn't it, to just extend it down? As, as opposed to just stopping the new paving right there at the end of the soccer complex, which is, there's no line of demarcation.
That's correct.
It's just a, it's just like middle of the road, just stopping it right there. I don't know how much more, I guess if it's $250,000 to do two miles, I don't know what an eighth of a mile would be, but.
Well, here's the good news is.
Roughly an eighth of that?
And when you're.
Or 1/16 of that?
Yeah, probably. It would be a pretty small additional amount. Here's the good news, if you'll notice on, on, literally, if we get the grant, as I read the paperwork, they just sent us a check.
Okay.
And then if the project, if we spend $275 or we just got our 250 and we're not getting any.
I asked a question just because if we did expand the project, I didn't want it to nullify the grant.
I, yes, I think we could expand it, and, and really, your opportunity cost would just be the additional tonnage, because, you know, your mobilization is going to be the same whether you pave two miles or two and a quarter miles, so.
And that, that does seem like a more natural breakpoint.
And the county wouldn't be upset off. We paved a quarter mile of their road, so. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Richard? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
I move to authorize and support the submission of the grant application.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item number 10, resolution authorizing the submission of a HMGP grant to AMEA requesting, requesting grant funds to purchase and install generators at critical facilities with a total estimated project cost of $551,625, and the City of Fairhope is matching funds estimated at $183,875. I believe Jessica was handling this before Jade got here.
So you'll remember that last spring, we came to you about the opportunity to apply for hazard mitigation funding for dollars related to Hurricane Sally. This is one of those grant applications. We have made it through, passed the LOI. We've been asked to apply for it. This deadline is January the 15th. You'll see that the project cost is a total of $551,625 with the 25% matched by the city at $183,875. This covers generators for 10 lift stations and three water treatment facilities, and it would be incredibly beneficial for us in any kind of storm situation or loss of power to those facilities. Can I answer any questions for you?
Any questions for Jessica? I know we've talked about this several times. Another good grant opportunity, and I appreciate y'all working on this.
Yeah, this is a good grant. I, I really like it as far as mitigation. That falls right in line with, with the infrastructure, the resilience that's coming down the line. So we should see a lot more money to do things like this in the future. So I'm excited about that.
And looking at the number that we are able to reach for, for this, it doesn't seem like a small amount, but we all know what infrastructure costs, and looking at the money that we're having to spend for what we get, it's, it's really incredible, so.
Yeah. Definitely a good return on investment. Council members, do y'all have any questions or discussion?
I move to submit the grant application.
All right. We got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? I guess not. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Um, let's see, item number 11 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope has voted to procure cloud-based storage as backup solution for the IT department, and the item is available for direct procurement through Omni Partners contract, which has been nationally bid and does not have to be let out for bid, uh, the cost will be $55,000. Jeff, is Jeff here?
It's budgeted, I move we approve it.
All right.
Procure the storage.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number 12 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of boring and installation of fiber from the city services and public utilities building to Pecan Building from AMS Utilities for $18,600. All right, that be, who'd be handling that?
Council President, it's budgeted, I move we approve the procurement.
Second.
You've got a motion and a second? Any further discussion, council? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, item 13 is a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan executed a contract with Emerson ZI Cloud SCADA Solutions Bristol, Inc., doing business as Remote Automation Solutions for $12,792.57, not including shipping, insurance, export and customers' clearance charges. Um, council, do y'all have any questions on, this is a SCADA as well?
This was discussed in the work session last meeting, am I correct?
This is for electric, correct?
Yeah, this one's for gas.
For gas.
Gas, appreciate it.
Well, it's under budget, I move we, uh, allow the mayor to execute the contract.
All right, we've got a motion, do we have a second? We've got a motion and a second. Any, any further conversation or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 14 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to extend the contract between the city of Fairhope and Mobile Infirmary Association, doing business as I Healthy Community until February 28, 2022, and to sign the necessary paperwork to terminate the contract after extension expires. And Mayor, this is, um, this is related to, to the opening of, of the facility at Pecan?
It is.
And that is scheduled to be closer to end of January, early February?
Right, first of February, and when we did the help them, well, the health fair in October, the benefits fair, we had quite a few people sign up on the wellness program, so in order for them not to have any kind of lapse, we wanted to go ahead and give them that option through the end of January, and then hopefully roll right into simple clinics, um, to simple wellness program.
Okay, thank you for that. A recap, does anybody have any questions for the mayor on that? All right, hearing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, item number 15 is a resolution that the city council hereby approves a negotiated price for, uh, bid number 004-22 for North Summit Street, uh, bank stabilization and awards the bid to John G. Walton Construction Company for not to exceed amount of $760,602.2 with reimbursement available for this project in the amount of $508,326.66, and, um, I know we had a local resident, Steve, came and spoke in favor of this. Uh, Richard, would you have any further explanation?
Yeah, and I do want to know that, that as we hinted at the work session or, and the meeting last, when you authorized renegotiate, that we, we hope that the contractor came to us with the ability to source sand from a local pit, and as you see, I think you've got the test results all in your packet, uh, all sand is not equal, but the good news is his sand is equal to what the, the Geotech specified, and betw, that was about an $80,000 reduction in that bid, as well as, uh, the, the, working together with the, the engineer and the contractor, we found another $30,000 of value engineering, so that's 110,000 down from the opening bid number, which I think is, is a good move in the right direction. Uh, and I do want to let you know that, that not only have the residents that we work with, but the mayor and I have, have had meetings with key leadership in single tax, and, and there is a good opportunity that single tax is gonna help defray some of the match cost as well, but we don't have, we, we didn't get told no, and I think the mayor is trying to make sure we're on their next board meeting to start the finalization of that.
Okay, well, good job, I appreciate you and, and the contractor working on, on that and being diligent to, to bring those numbers down. And I don't know who first pointed out the, the saying, whether it was the contractor or you, but that was a, a good catch, and I appreciate y'all working on that.
Thank you.
Um, council members, do y'all have any questions about this project for Richard?
I, I have a question for Kim. It, it says the project, and this is a, this is maybe a good error, it says the project was budgeted at 470,000. Now, I know the total is 760, but our, the amount that looks like our matching amount would be 252,000, uh, so it's saying it's over budget of 290, but I would think that it would be the difference, it would be under budget by 470 minus 252. Is that not right?
So, I mean, yeah, the, the expense was, is under budget, or actually over budget, but the revenue that I had coming in, you know, is down two, so between the two, that's where we put the note in the bottom, but on this, this particular grant, Richard can help me here, originally, there was three projects of money that was supposed to come through. Well, the golf course project went way over, so they moved money from that project, so we ended up with two projects out of those three grant allotments, and so really what's left in the grant is what we're putting here, that's the reason our match is not, um, the 75, 25, um, that we're ending up having to pay a little bit more, and it's, it's because there was only X dollars of grant money available for us.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and if you remember, we, we knew when they first said that we qualified for this money, that we thought they were, they were skinny on it, and we've proven that to be true, uh, and so what they were willing to do is they said, well, we'll give you the whole pot, you tell us how you want to spend it, so, um, and so what's remaining in that whole pot is we are guaranteed $508,326.66 to come back to offset the costs of this project.
Okay. Thank you for that further explanation. Um, so as long as we had spent the minimum amount of whatever the match was, and we would get that, or were we gonna get that regardless of putting any money in?
If the project had, let's say the project had, had come in lower, okay, they would only matched up to 75%.
Okay.
So that was the cap, so that money would have gone back.
As long as we put in 25% or more, we were getting 100% of that remaining budget.
Correct, yes.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, council, any further questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Got a, a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, council. Uh, last resolution to consider tonight, we have, uh, item number 16, resolution that the Fairhope City Council gratefully accepts the deed of gift for River Mill Park from Fairhope Single Tax Corporation to the city of Fairhope and authorizes the mayor to sign any documents necessary to complete the transfer. I realize it's not night, but I've been up for a long time, so feels like it. Uh, Mayor, would you like to speak to this a little? Thank you.
I think y'all probably will remember single tax coming in and asking us about this parcel to see if it was something that we would, um, be interested in accepting from them. It is, um, right there, just past where the possible police precinct will be, right there on 48, so it's a nice area for a green spot, there's a lot of development going on out there, um, and, you know, we'll have sidewalks to the park, um, there's the neighborhood gave for estates and all, everything going down on Blueberry Lane, so I think it'll be a nice, a nice park for that area.
That's good. All right, and I know there were some questions from some citizens, one was related to, um, oil and gas rights, and, and, you know, that's something we, we see frequently in, in deeds now, is retaining that, so.
I would say overwhelming the vast majority, not, close to 100% of them, they don't.
Don't transfer.
They don't convey.
Don't convey.
Oil and mineral rights.
Yeah, so I, I think that's fairly standard that that would not have been included in this, and, and I think single tax are continuing to work with the city of Fairhope, um, great partner, we're really fortunate to have that relationship that we have here.
And I just did want to mention too, they did about $100,000 worth of improvements to the park, just going out and adding some dirt and, um, you know, leveling it and adding sod and some irrigation, and I have had Richard Johnson and George Lad walk it to make sure there was nothing that we needed to be aware of before we accepted it.
Okay. Uh, council members, any questions or comments for the mayor?
I think this is perfect, you know, that area over there is growing out in a village concept, and, uh, there was definitely a need for, um, to kind of look forward to where parks and green space would be, so I think a lot of our citizens were looking for this, so I think it's a great.
I agree, I always think in any additional green space we can pick up is a, is a good thing for the citizens.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no questions, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?